This meeting today is open to the members of the public and will be webcast and a recording will be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that the Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting, too. We've received one set of questions from members of the public. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test plan for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. I'm Minas Parry, I should have said that first. I'm the deputy chair of the Economic Development and Skills Policy Committee. Please can I ask every member of the committee to introduce themselves in turn, starting from my left?
Hello, I'm councillor Brian Homshaw, I'm the member for Broomhill and Sherrill Vale.
Councillor Henry Notte, member for Hillsborough Ward.
Peter Price, councillor for Shag Green, Brighton.
Shaun is Laura Moynihan here, but ignore her. I'm Laura Moynihan, I'm the councillor for, Labour councillor for Manor Castle.
Good afternoon, Abdul Ghum, councillor for Firth Park.
Councillor Robert Rice, councillor for East Ancklesville Ward, subbing for councillor Martin Smith.
Councillor Curtis Crossland, member for Baton Ward.
Barbara Masters, member for Ecclesall Ward.
Thank you all. Can I ask members on the top desk to introduce themselves and ask officers to introduce themselves when they come to reports?
Thank you, Chair. My name's Amanda Clayton, I'm Democratic Services.
Thank you, Chair. Sarah Bennett, Assistant Director of Legal Services.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item one, apologies for absence. As mentioned already, the Chair, councillor Martin Smith sends his apologies. His substitute is councillor Robert Rees and I'm acting as Chair in his stead as well. I don't think we have any further apologies. Item two, exclusion of the public and press. The meeting today is open to the public, however, the appendix to the report at items 11 on the agenda is not available to the public or press because it contains exempt information relating to financial and business affairs. If members wish to discuss the information in the appendix, we will need to ask members of the public and press to kindly leave for that part of the meeting and we'll pause the webcast. Item three, declarations of interest. Do any members wish to declare an interest in any items of business on the agenda today? Henry, please can you state the item of business and whether it's a pecuniary or personal interest?
I would like to declare a non-pecuniary interest in item 11 as I have a business located near Hillsborough Park where the Tramways Festival occurs.
Great, thank you. Are there any of us? If not, I'll move us on to minutes of previous meetings. Are members happy to approve as a correct record minutes of meetings held on the 15th of June 2023? These are on pages 11 to 19 in the minutes. Can I get nods, please? Great, thank you. Item five, public questions and petitions. We've received one set of questions. Please note there is a maximum of 30 minutes for this item. Can I check, is there anyone to ask those questions in the meeting? If not, the questioners will receive written copies of those questions from the Chair, from Martin. And members of the committee have also received copies of those as well. Moving on to members' questions, there is a maximum time limit of 10 minutes for this whole item of business. Written questions, written answers from Martin as the Chair of the committee have been circulated to members in advance of this meeting, have been emailed to all members. This item of business is to provide an opportunity for members who have asked, submitted questions to ask one supplementary question for each question answer. Laura.
I have the question about when we would receive an update on the state of the economy and productivity in the city. I have the written answer and I note that it says that we normally do this every three years because of cost and resource implications. What I'm slightly concerned about is three years is a long time if we are to pick up any underlying trends and I would have thought we would do it more frequently than that. There's a number of issues in the in sectors, including the retail sector, for example, the Wilco stuff, et cetera. And if there are trends and this is happening in parts of our economy that would affect jobs and productivity in the city, I would like it picked up at an earlier stage. But as I said, I do understand the cost and resource implications, but I just think it should be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moynihan, I'm going to ask Diana Buckley to respond.
Yeah, hi everybody, I'm Diana Buckley, I'm the Director of Economy, Skills and Culture. Thanks for your question, Laura. Yes, so we do an independent economic assessment every three years, which is a large scale piece of work. A lot of the data that we look at at that only changes annually, so to pick up trends, we kind of wait a couple of years because there is a cost in doing that. However, on a quarterly basis, there are lots of statistics that do update and annually. So we produce a quarterly economic impact kind of review and an annual one that we do internally rather than procure as from an external place and we share that with some city stakeholders and with officers. Very happy to start to share that with you as committee members as well. So that would pick up, for example, trends in unemployment, claimant count. We do have some data around vacancies that are being kind of out there in the market as well. So there are several pieces of data that we can and do monitor at a more regular basis. If we do want to do that big external assessment more regularly, happy to look at that, the kind of cost and benefits of doing that. So if I share with you some of the economic updates that we produce as well as the economic assessment, I'm happy to take that up further with the committee and take recommendations from yourselves.
Thank you, Diana, that'd be really helpful. I would like that information and I'm sure other members of the committee would appreciate that as well, so we can contribute to policy formulation to deal with it. I just wonder if we've benchmarked ourselves against other core cities in terms of what they do. I think Manchester do it much more regularly, but Manchester have got a lot more resources than us. And their productivity has increased considerably more than London has, which they're putting down to the transport network. So I think it'd be useful if we just had a look at what they do and I know we can't compete with Manchester in terms of budgets, but it would be useful just to check. But thank you for the quarterly information.
Thank you and thank you, Diana, that sounds like a really helpful thing to share. Councillor Homshaw.
Thank you for that, Diana. And following on from councillor Moynihan's question, can I clarify whether we have baseline data pre and post pandemic for the economy?
Yes, we do. Yeah, it's ONS data in the main, but we can track trends pre and post during pandemic. So the economic assessment that's been published does some of that data analysis for us. We haven't got a lot of data post pandemic yet because often there's a lag. So on productivity, GVA, you're waiting a year and a half, sometimes two years till you get that data. So some of the trends post Covid, we haven't got yet. So we are using things like footfall as indicators, you know, kind of some of the high street trends. So there's other interim measures that we use outside of some of the national statistics. So we've done some tracking of that, certainly hotel occupancy and things like that we look at more regularly, but we're dictated to by the data for a large extent. But again, I'll share the data that we have and if there's any gaps or particular things that you're interested in, happy to pick up where others might be doing some of that activity.
And could I just check as well when the next three-year analysis is going to be done?
Well, the current economic assessment was done last year and brought to this committee in June, so it'll be from that point onwards. However, as I said, if we think there's a reason to do it before then, absolutely can consider that. So for example, if data does become more available to get a better perspective on what's happening in the economy kind of post Covid and during this quite difficult economic period at the moment, we might be able to do something different. It's just looking at what data's changed that we haven't already analysed. So let's share what we've got and take that judgement together.
Great, thank you. Are there any further questions or comments on that? If not, I'll move us on to item seven, which is the work programme. This is page 21 of the agenda. I'm going to introduce Amanda Clayton, who's, and I think Diana Buckley's also going to give some further information in context of appendix three.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, the work programme is there to note amendments since the last meeting and for your agreement today and I will hand over to Diana just to run you through some changes. Yeah, thank you, everybody. So we've updated the work programme since the last committee meeting. There's been a lot of new items that have been put onto the committee. Some of those that were planned for today and raised last time have been moved. So a presentation from Marketing Sheffield is due now at the November committee. There was also an item around the employment skills task and finish group that you guys asked for and we started out on a new employment and skills strategy. There is a paper that you should be seeing around that, but we decided that we could do that informally. Essentially, it's enacting the decision from this board last year to put that group into place. So we'll circulate that informally, there was just a lot of pressure on today's agenda. So please do take a look at the new work programme. We've been working with members through informal sessions as well to make sure that this represents the things that you want to talk about. So if there's any further items, do let me know. I just also want to note that at full council on the 6th of September last week, there was a referral to this committee under a fairer, greener economy for Sheffield. It was resolved that we would ask the Economic Development and Skills Policy Committee to consider working with partners, including its new diverse advisory business board and the Chamber of Commerce, on how we can further support small businesses to address climate impacts. So we'll pick that up and add that to the work programme from that referral from full council. Thank you.
Great, thank you both. Councillor Homshaw.
Yes, could we possibly have an update, a public update on green upskilling within the work plan? I can't spot one that's on there up until next March. Could we do that?
Thank you. By green upskilling, is that related to the employment and skills strategy? So last year, the committee voted to incorporate green jobs and skills?
Yes. I mean, I want this both for the public but also for myself as well as I wasn't on the committee last year.
We did provide a presentation briefing to committee last year around some of the work that we're doing around the green economy and we did agree as well to put it into the employment and skills strategy. But certainly, I can share that presentation that we did to the whole committee again for any new members and if an informal briefing's needed to kind of present that, happy to do so. If there's anything from there that you want to bring into an interim update before the strategy comes in March, happy to do that as well.
Thank you. Any further comments about the work programme? If not, the report contains recommendations for approval. I'll read these out in full. So the recommendations are, one, that the committee's work programme, our set out in appendix one be agreed, including any additions and amendments identified in part one, that consideration be given to the further additions or adjustments to the work programme presented at part two of the appendix of appendix one, and that members give consideration to any further issues to be explored by officers for inclusion in part two of appendix one of the next work programme report for potential addition to the work programme. Are we all agreed? Great, thank you. That clearly passes. Item eight, quarter one budget monitoring. This starts at page 39 of the agenda pack. And Philip, are you okay to introduce yourself in your role? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, members. I'm Philip Gregory, I'm the Council's Director of Finance and Commercial Services and Section 151 Officer. This report is the first budget monetary report of 2023/24 and reports to the committee the financial position both of the council and this committee as at the end of July. So the overall council budget position at the end of July was a forecast overspend for the full year of 17.6 million pounds, as a 3.6% variance on the overall budget of 487 million pounds. The council set aside 70 million pounds in reserve to support a financially sustainable position, so they set that money aside in 21/22, of which 30 million pounds remains. So if the overspend doesn't improve this year by year end, then there will be 13 million pounds left in that reserve. There are a number of cost and demand pressures that contribute to this forecast position and these are set out in the report that's before you this afternoon. The forecast for this committee is a 100,000 pound overspend against your budget of 9.4 million pounds. It's also worth noting that the budget improvement plans or savings for this committee are on track for delivery. The medium term financial analysis was presented to Strategy and Resources Committee on the 7th of September to provide an early view of the council's financial position for the next four years. Within this report, proposed savings for each committee were set out. So the proposed target for this committee over the next four years would be actually further savings or additional income of 800,000 pounds, with 700,000 pounds due next year and 100,000 pounds the year after, but then nothing in the final two years of that medium term position. So that summarizes the content of the quarter one report and has been submitted to you. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Councillor Masters.
Thank you for that. I can't find it at the moment, but there was something about how much we have to support the museums and I just wanted some information about that, is it across the board? Was it one particular aspect of museums because they're a really important part of our culture? Was it in another part of the report? Needless to say, I didn't mark it, so I can't find it at the moment.
If it's not in the report, we'll come back to you with a response on that.
No, I think it might be in another section, but I don't remember thinking. But I'd like to know a bit more about that. I think it must have been in another section, so I shall leave it and come back to you if I do find it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Masters. I'm sure that can be followed up by email. Councillor Moynihan, please.
I know that statement seems small, but I can tell you that it's a bit of a policy area, but proportionately, they're much bigger. So you're going to do the return of that budget? And I just wonder what I think about that. It's, you know, it could just be many of the services and whether there's a possibility of further spending. Just to give you a few of the 10%. Thanks, Laura. And yes, although these figures might seem small in the scale of other committees, as a proportion, they're much bigger and that's primarily because this area relies a lot on external funding. So we use that small core resource that we've got to leverage in other external funding. So actually, you're probably cutting more than 10% in the area if you do that because you'll be cutting those external funds. I think that this committee certainly has an understanding of that and the council more broadly as well. So as we get into the next couple of months where we're looking at setting the budget pressures for next year, we'll be talking to you about what these pressures are in our area and how we can mitigate them. But certainly, to make cuts of the scale of this pressure in this committee will mean stopping full services in this area. So there'll be options for you guys to consider whether that's something that you're willing to do or whether some of the pressures in these areas and where they come from, particularly because they might be from inflation or energy are best held elsewhere, really. So I think that process is about to start. Now we've got these pressures identified, the next step is to do that work informally with you guys and then at the November committee, we'll bring back a report in public and look at the options that we've either accepted or rejected around those pressures. Yeah, but certainly as a proportion, it's much bigger and I do think actually you cut more than that because of the external funding that is matched to that. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you both. Councillor Crossland, please.
Thank you, Chair. Kind of following up on that, forgive my ignorance of the committee system, but we're one of a few committees where a cut in funding could lead to a bigger impact further down the line due to economic impact. As a committee, do we have any process of going back to S and R and saying, well, actually if you force us to make this cut, it will mean that further cuts will have to be made in five years and 10 years? Because I think we need that discussion and we also rely, while our budget is about 8 million, I think you said, we get 15, over 15 million in grants? So a potential cut of 100,000 pounds might seem small on a piece of paper, but it could mean that a lot of that grant funding is then missed because of a staffing resource further down the line. I just think that we need to have a two-way conversation with the people who tell us that we need to find these savings. I'm not sure if there's a process of doing that.
Thank you, Councillor Crossland and Councillor Moynihan, for the points that are sort of related. I agree, it's always challenging when asking people to find savings. The easiest savings are always the ones that are taken first and after 13 years of austerity, there are no easy savings left for anybody to take. I equally acknowledge the fact that you've raised, which is that actually if you're generating income and you're supporting the economic development of a city, it's important that we don't effectively cut our nose off to spite our faces and reduce things so much that actually we can't deliver. One of the things that we are doing is we'll be going back in a similar process to what I understand happened last year through groups. So each of the groups will have the opportunity to feed back their views on how this approach has been taken. There'll be opportunity to sort of rank proposals that come forward and feed in through that proposal before formal committees in November. So there is a process to go through, which might not be directly with S and R committee, but there is a process to go through to challenge some of these assumptions. To give you some comfort, in the background, what we're also doing is challenging some of the pressures assumptions. So to get to the savings totals for each year, within that, we make an assumption on the pressures that each service face, including paying for things like inflation on energy, pay awards, other service pressures that are emerging. One of the things that we will be doing between now and the autumn is reviewing those pressures so that if there are areas where we feel we don't need necessarily to put as much funding into those, we can look at where else we can distribute that to reduce the savings targets in particular areas. So we are also reviewing those in the background to try and minimise those as much as possible. But I do recognise the points that you raise in terms of it might seem like a relatively small amount in comparison to the whole council, but actually proportionately, there is a bigger impact there.
Thank you both. I've had three indications, two indications to speak, I'll take them both and then come back for any answers. Councillor Notte and then Councillor Price, please.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies for everyone who's seen the name councillor Brian Homshaw pop up. My card didn't swipe me in and I am not councillor Brian Homshaw. And apologies for asking a question that's more to do with the general position than specifically this committee, but of the 70 million reserves, at the current rate, those are going to be fully depleted in 24/25. What are the implications of not having those reserves available?
Thank you, that's a good question. I think the focus is on making sure that we invest in services now. So you will hear very shortly about the future Sheffield Programme and how that's been developed in order that we invest in services to make our budget position financially sustainable. Part of this report identifies where there are underlying budget pressures and our focus this year is very much on not just the in-year financial position, but those underlying financial pressures. If we can address those in a sustainable way, that puts us on a really good footing for future years and not having this large overspend position from one year to the next that we then have to use reserves to pluck. I think it's also worth noting, there was a similar overspend position reported at a similar time, this point in the last financial year, and the outturn position for the previous financial year was about 5 million pounds. So there is a pattern that there's a large forecast overspend early in the year, which then reduces over the course of the year. There's a note of caution to that though this year in that a lot of the pressures that we're experiencing this year, both in social care, so a large percentage of that overspend relates to social care, particularly in home-to-school transport, and also the second large element that's driving the overspend position is in temporary accommodation and support for homeless families and people. And so I think we're unlikely to see a large reduction in the overspend because a lot of those are driven by government policy. So for example, with temporary accommodation, we're not able to claim the full cost of that from the Department for Work and Pensions in relation to housing benefit. So we bear the full cost of that. So unless we can reduce the number of people who are in temporary accommodation, which is usually in bed and breakfast accommodation, we will continue to bear those costs for the rest of the year. There is work ongoing to find ways of reducing our allowance on that external provision and find ways of supporting people using our own housing stock. So there is a lot of work happening in the background to try and reduce that position. But it's a national position, it's a position that's faced by councils across the country, both for the temporary accommodation and in fact for the social care and the home-to-school transport issues we're facing, they're not isolated just to Sheffield. Actually, there are issues faced by many councils around the country and you'll see some of the lobbying that is happening at the moment relates to those funding issues where councils across the country are facing similar issues. So we're in the relatively good position that we've got a reserve that will cover off that position this year and potentially next year. We're not resting on our laurels to say that we're satisfied with that, we want to see that forecast position reduce and we also want to make sure we try and tackle the underlying issues so that it puts us in a sustainable position going forwards.
Thank you. And finally, Councillor Price, please.
I think mine's been answered, Chair. It's just that it's very complex, this policy committee, because there's so many income-raising avenues it can go down. I'm just wondering whether, I mean, it may be worth taking a little bit out of that reserve to bring in bigger grants which cover a lot of this expenditure and I'm just hoping there's enough creative thinking that's looking at the alternative ways of funding some of the stuff we're having to find out of budgets. Similarly, looking at charges we make, there's also, rather than cutting the service, lumping the service out, are we just looking at all different avenues of bringing more income in really? And I think you've probably answered it, but it seems to me a big push from this policy committee, which is not probably available to other policy areas.
So we've made assumptions within the medium term financial analysis about income raising and assume that where fees and charges are set by committees, that they will increase by at least inflation. We've used a 5% inflation rate, which is where we expect it to be in September. We won't be doing creative accounting, but we are asking people to be creative about how they do find ways of funding their services. So we just are conscious that as well as asking people to find savings, it's about can you generate more income? And actually, are there areas within your services where if we invest some money upfront, it will deliver more income in the future? And that's absolutely one of our things that we want to focus in on. If we can use that 13 million pounds of reserve to invest in services to generate more income, that's absolutely what we should be doing.
Great, thank you, everyone. If there are no further comments, the recommendation for this item is to note the updated information and management actions provided by the report on the quarter one revenue budget outturn as described in the report. I'm assuming that is noted. Item nine, Shared Prosperity Fund application. This is an update on the visitor economy and culture for years two and three. This is page 49 on the agenda pack and the presenting officers will be Diana Buckley, Emma France and Rebecca Maddox.
As the individual who's submitted the public questions has now entered the chamber, is there any possibility to revisit that item?
We have already come past that item, but there is a debate on the topic later.
Okay, thanks, everybody. I'll hand over to my colleagues who have written the detail of this report, so I want to give them the opportunity to kind of talk to you about it. But this builds on a number of reports that we've been talking to you as committee about for a while now around Shared Prosperity Fund, where we've agreed actions around employment and skills, business support and a year one programme around culture. and visitor economy. So this report builds on those where you've given us a previous steer around what policy interventions you'd like to see happen. Really taking this into a commissioning decision of allowing us to operationalise it. So I'll hand over to Emma and Rebecca just to talk through some of the detail.
Hi there. Good afternoon everyone. I'm Emma France. I'm the Service Manager for Marketing Sheffield. And I'm here with Rebecca, who's Head of Business Development of the Culture. This report outlines our bid to the South Yorkshire Mayor and Combined Authority for Shared Prosperity Funding for years two and three from the Culture and Visitor Economy pot. The initial detail of this came to EDS Committee in June, when we agreed to bring a commissioning decision back before accepting the funds should our application be successful. The direction of travel for this bid was approved at that committee. And we are expecting an imminent decision on our bid from Simca, but initial feedback has been really positive this week. The report sets out how we will operationalise, as Diana said, our programme of activity to the end of March twenty twenty five, building on year one, to build Sheffield's reputation as a distinctive, diverse and accessible cultural city break and visitor destination. In summary, we'll do this through supporting international and community elements of three strategic events. We'll further support our augmented reality look-up project. We'll continue our highly successful brand and content creation campaign. We'll host some larger scale media events, which we haven't done for some time, so this allows us to do that. We'll employ some support staff for the duration of the project, which was something that committee had picked up around having obviously funding applications, but we need to build the capacity of the staff in there as well. An accessibility guide linked to our visitor economy and cultural attractions and venues to ensure that they were able to meet the needs of those visitors. And a cultural events programme. It should be noted that the hundred ninety one thousand pounds for the cultural events programme in a year three will be used as match funding for a larger place partnerships biz to the Arts Council England. To enable us to support a larger programme of transformational activity in this space. Our expression of interest will be submitted this month with a full application if we're successful in autumn twenty twenty three. And a further commissioning decision will be brought back to this committee on this particular element of year three as it develops. So hopefully most of the information in the report is not new to you. It's just the decisions that we're asking you to approve. So Rebecca and I are here obviously to take any questions.
Great, thank you. councillor Reese please.
Thank you for the report. I had the pleasure of coming to university here and one of the one of the driving kind of things that brought me here was not the, not only the education, but the cultural side of the of the experience that Sheffield gives. Now, I've noted in the report that there is sixty thousand pounds put aside for three events. I'm quickly scrolling up and down, so please excuse me. But one of them is for No Bounds, which is an electronic dance and arts festival. Now, it's not the kind of music that I would usually go for, but I know a number of my number of my friends who came to university is something that would bring them to Sheffield. So a notification went out on in August saying that their event this year, due to kind of increased costs, but also kind of access to funding has had to be reduced from their big event down to two smaller events. But importantly, their psychedelic, what's the word, what's the wording they use, psychedelic sensory session is going ahead. But we're worried, I'm just a bit worried that, given that these are things that we want to see grow and be part of the kind of cultural impact and experience Sheffield, whether someone's grown up in Sheffield or has moved to the city for studying. We want to safeguard that. Do we have confidence that the festival being able to go ahead in twenty twenty four, but also the paired-back event is not going to be impacted by this? And how is the funding kind of linked into that? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll take that question because I've been meeting with Liam this week. So this year is kind of a one-off where he repositions the event for a new five-year growth plan really. So here, us writing him into this bid is absolutely to support the growth of that festival going forward. All of the events that we're supporting through this SPF funding don't normally get grants from Sheffield City Council and they are reaching into niche communities and an international audience in new ways. Certainly No Bounds Festival gets five-star reviews from The Guardian. It brings in international visitors. It really focuses on a youth audience, so kind of sixteen to thirty-five. And an LGBTQ audience as well really. So it's really important as part of our cultural festival. So we're really pleased to be able to support it through this bid. We are also talking to Liam around scaling that event over the long term and what support he might need from us and how we can support him and get him funding from people like the Arts Council as well to support the event going forward. So this money in here is for his twenty four, twenty five, whereas coming back bigger and bolder. So I think this year is a bit of a stocktake for him. But yes, absolutely, we're working with Liam on the future of that.
That's brilliant here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. councillor Homshaw please.
Hello there. I think my, my questions are going to be directed towards Rebecca and Emma maybe. So the first thing I'd like to say is I'm really pleased that they're actually going to employ more support staff within, within the council. I think that has to happen, to be able to support the arts and culture within the city and to provide a strategic lead. But my, my question is really along the lines of how are we going to support more community-facing events? And, and I say this because I had the pleasure of meeting some of the children's media conference delegates. I actually bumped into them in the pub, which was a great forum for having a chat. So I got talking to them and asking why they were here in Sheffield and what they were representing. And I'm interested to see that you are planning a community-facing exhibition alongside that. So if you could explain a little bit more about that, and maybe we could try and do that with, with many of our media conferences and, and events that we organise. Because I think, you know, communicating to the more general public that how successful we are at bringing some of these big events like Doc Fest and the children's media.
Okay, great. So just to explain to those who may not be aware of it, Children's Media Conference was actually a spin-off from Doc Fest and it particularly focuses on children's media. It has an international audience. And for a number of years, using Arts Council funding, the CMC, Children's Media Conference, were able to run something called Playground, which was a sort of an interactive, open to the public, free, particularly for children, sort of exhibition, running along usually at that site gallery. Now, the funding for that, they weren't able to secure that this year. So what we've put into the report now is resources so that that can actually be put back in again. And as you say, CMC is sort of, the core of it is almost like, it's kind of business-focused and quite international. But it's really important that all the events that we run in Sheffield also key in to our communities and have a benefit for Sheffield people. So this is absolutely what this funding is aiming to do, as well as inspiring young people to understand kind of new media and to, you know, think about their own futures within that context.
Could just, could just say, actually, it isn't a small conference, is it? I mean, we're talking about five hundred delegates. It's the largest in the world.
I think it's possibly even more than five hundred. It is, it is large and it is very international. Yeah.
Great, thank you both. curtis please. councillor Crossland.
Thank you Chair. I think this is a great report and the things that you'll be working on over the next couple of years look really good for the city. I think something that's possibly missing from the report is how the city can benefit after, after it's kind of done, after the funding has run out, because I think that as officers and as a team, you'll be able to develop transferable skills from helping these. So it'd be good to hear how, how it could benefit us in, in the future. And such as the accessibility guide, once that's created, it will then cost far less to update it year after year after year. And with the augmented reality things, we could roll that out to our museums and our historical assets around the city as well. So I think it's great for the next two years, but I think it will have a bigger impact further down the line as well. And it'd be great to hear kind of how you see that going forward and if you've thought about how it will impact the city further down the line as well.
I think you're quite right. This is about kind of building legacy into the things that we're doing and creating significant change. I suppose what I would hope, what I've imagined, is that because this is shared prosperity funding from the government through the city region to the council, that's something that there may be additional funds that come through to follow this programme. And obviously there will be lots of decisions further down the line by yourselves as councillors about how that future funding might be spent. But the learning that we have from this first three years of shared prosperity funding, I'm sure would build into all of the proposals that come from there. And there may be elements that we'd want to continue funding and there would be lots of things I'm sure we would want to change and you know, build, build on our learning from. I don't know if Diana, do you want to?
There's an element of, there's an element of commercialisation on some of these projects as well. So kind of one of the things that Marketing Sheffield tries to influence are kind of innovative ideas to, for another expression, to make them fly. And the shared prosperity fund with something like Look Up has given us the ability to, to, to look at those kind of initial buildings and start that off and give it legs really. But the next stage really is to commercialise those things and get other organisations involved. Museums would be a great one, events would be a good one, but also kind of some corporate, corporate activations potentially. So that is the next stage of that, where you have to get it to a certain level before effectively you have a proposition that you can go out and sell to, to that kind of commercial world really.
Great, thank you. councillor Moynihan please.
This is a really good example of what, reflecting what we've just discussed in the budget, isn't it? How if we'd have cut, had a ten percent cut, this report might never have come to the table. So I think it's a really good example of what we're talking about. I think it's really important we invent, invest in cultural activities. Time Out named as the top UK city to visit. We're with the Observers. Twenty twenty-three foodie hotspot, greenest city in the UK by NatWest. Lots of these accolades. And the past investment, as I'm sure Peter will endorse, in sports and culture, why we've got the Rugby World Cup and the Women's Euros. So I think we've got to invest in order to deliver jobs as well as cultural activity, because don't forget, this, this is a growth sector and will contribute to employment of local people.
I think absolutely when you talk about, you know, what we kind of probably lose sight of sometimes when we write these reports, when we talk about marketing campaigns, is actually this is all about the businesses. So all this is about is bringing more people in to support our hospitality businesses. And you're absolutely right. And one of the key things that we're trying to do at the moment is get Sheffield's reputation on those lists. So whether that's about hosting media, whether it's about bringing people in, whether it's about the events and maximising the reputational benefit from, from that, that's absolutely a hundred percent of what we're trying to do.
I just think you should have just made more of that in the report, because that's how we're going to, when we're in budget discussions, that's how we're going to sell it.
That's, that's good advice. Thank you Laura.
Great, thank you all. Are there any further comments on that? If not, just to add my agreement with what everyone said, obviously a lot of those accolades have come from the work of the marketing team and directly from that. And, you know, the more we can do to increase the size of those teams, the better we can do to draw in funds. It's a really positive piece. There is a recommendation for approval. I'm going to read out the first part of it. So we're looking to approve the commissioning strategy for up to five hundred and thirty-eight thousand one hundred and five pounds as outlined in the report and to operationallyise the programme of activity set out in the report. Our members in agreement. Fantastic. That clearly passes and I think the thanks from the team should be passed on as well. Moving on to item ten, Economic Recovery Fund round two update. For anyone following at home, this is page, starts page sixty seven in the public agenda pack. The presenting officer will be Sarah Lowey-Jones.
Good afternoon councillors and very happy to be here and thank you for your time in considering this, this paper today. My name is Sarah Lowey-Jones and I'm an economic policy officer working in the economic strategy team, which sits as part of the Economic Development, Culture and Skills Directorate, headed up by Diana sitting next to me of course. And so I realise you're a busy agenda today. So if you're happy, I thought I'd just summarise the key points in the paper and hopefully leave time for plenty of your questions at the end. But with Chair, your permission, I'd first like, if you feel it's appropriate, to thank the very many people who've been involved in developing and delivering the second round of the Economic Recovery Fund first, because quite apart from the, the team that sits behind me and the, and the council staff working on this, of course, there's been a team of six business information officers, working tirelessly in support of project teams, as well as a team of five application development workers we brought together specifically to support interested parties who, who needed that additional help in bringing an application together. And of course, the project teams themselves, this process is not an easy one to go through. It requires a whole lot of time and effort to be part of. So I really felt it important to note that and to thank everyone who's, who's been part of this, both successful and unfortunately some obviously unsuccessful as well. So I realise that people have to be familiar with the recovery fund at different levels. And as noted before, there are new members on the committee. So just by way of quick background, I thought it was helpful to just give you a quick, quick summary really of what the recovery fund is. So it's a two million pound grant fund and it was developed as a flagship part of the city's economics, economic response to the pandemic and, and still sits really as a core part of that. And, and still speaks to that as, as its strategic kind of framework really. But it is different and it's not a grant fund to individual businesses, as you may have been familiar with during that period. But it's allocated to a project area and that project is brought together by a collaboration of local businesses and others in the local area for broader benefit, not individual benefits. So collaboration really is what underpins the Economic Recovery Fund. And that's a collaboration that happens locally between all of those different actors, but also between those teams and ourselves as a council, which has been really important, I think, in the process. So just briefly, the first round launched in March twenty one and there were twenty-six successful projects funded in that first round of funding. And we're just closing down the final remaining projects now. And the impacts were really positive, according to the independent evaluation that was conducted of that first round. So for every pound invested, the team determined that more than two pounds had been recouped back in social value. And on that basis, I think, a further round of two million pounds was agreed by full council in February twenty-two. And the shape and purpose of that second round of funding was determined by yourselves as a committee and the findings from that evaluation as well, in which all of the recommendations were accepted and enacted on. So that meant after that development phase, a new round of funding was launched in February twenty twenty-three. And this report essentially updates you as the committee on the current position of the recovery fund. As we've now completed both the application and the scoring phases. So in terms of the report, there's a fair bit of detail in, in the appendices and there's a list of all of the applications that were received as part of the second round of funding. And it gives you the outcome as well, whether they've been successful and if so, what the funding offer has been for that team or if they've unfortunately been unsuccessful as well. The recommendation in the report is actually just to note the outcome of this process so far. The approval decision was taken by Finance Committee on Monday, which will allow the council to enter into a contract with an appropriate lead organisation in each of those areas where they've been offered more than fifty thousand pounds worth of funding. And there's a group of nine of those projects, which we would consider larger projects, and fourteen of which are under fifty thousand pounds. And Diana, as the director, has the delegated authority to enter into those contracts directly. So the first part of the report essentially goes into a little bit of detail on the application process and the scoring process and provides you with, with the outcomes of that really. But there's a, a second part of the report that gives you a bit of detail as well about how each of those individual twenty-three projects makes up the Economic Recovery Fund programme. And it shows hopefully a widespread actually across the city and a wider spread than I think we saw in the first round of funding, which hopefully is pleasing to the committee. And there are sixteen completely new areas that we didn't work with at all during the first round of funding that are represented in that successful group as well, which hopefully kind of demonstrates and suppose that there's appetite out there out in the city for this kind of work and that having the offer of the recovery fund on the table can catalyse these collaborations and discussions to have in these local communities. I know that councillors were also concerned that areas considered to be more deprived on basis of their indices of multiple deprivation. Yourself particularly Chair, we're, we're asking about this. That they would be well represented by a second round of funding and certainly not disadvantaged by having the process be as, as toughgoing as it, as it kind of is. um, be as, as tough going as it, as it kind of is. And again, the data that is in the report, I think, demonstrates fairly well that that has not been the case. And more than half of the projects that have been successful are from those areas, which, which do have a, a, a score of one to five in those indices, which of course is a national indicator, uh, rather than a local one. So that's kind of the shape of the report. I hope that's been a useful summary for you. But I would be obviously very happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Coe.
Thank you. Um, just a comment, Chair. Thanks for that report, Sarah. Um, uh, just to say that this first part ward was, uh, which is our ward, was one of the wards that had some, uh, uh, of the, yeah, yeah, this funding approved. And the projects that were, you know, brought forward were really successful. In fact, we were this, this morning have taken a walk around this area in terms of some of the benefits that immediately apparent, you know, as a result of the, the funding. Uh, just a, a practical, you know, excellent example of partnership working really, uh, with, with the local residents, local groups. Uh, and I think it was fantastic to see so many people sort of, you know, come forward and, and not only just sort of activates, uh, the, the, the local community, but actually motivates them as well. And it was really nice to see some of the benefits that have, that have come out of that this morning when we were taking a walk around. As a result of that, we, you know, I noted that the, the actual benefits, like the local businesses now have got a, uh, you know, a, a communication forum set up as a result of them, you know, being engaged with that project. And this, uh, you know, they're sort of engaging very regularly on other issues and other in, information sharing, uh, activities that's going on, you know, as a result of an offshore, but in the sort of benefit of this, this, this project. And the communities and we, ourselves are now looking forward to the, the second round, uh, that hopefully will be as, as successful in First Park as well. So thank you very much for that, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. And it was, it was such a joy to walk around with you and the team this morning. They encapsulate all of the wonderful things that are being a ERF project are about really, as you say. And it was actually one of the private sector representatives on the steering group that made the comment that sometimes it can be just the smallest of, um, interventions that creates just a lovely and impact that feels bigger than that intervention. And you're right that having the, the street art that's displayed on the shutters in the library in such a public space, the improvements to the roundabout, um, the, the street art that's on the utility boxes, the improvements in the park, all of that, I think adds up to a really different perception that people might have and a different feeling when they're walking through that space. So congratulations to that team and they were just wonderful to work with.
Thank you both. Uh, councillor Masters, please.
Thank you Chair. Uh, thank you for the report. And yes, I'm really pleased about the outcomes. It's really reflective. Uh, what, the only thing that sort of I worry about are those that failed, uh, or were scaled back basically. So if projects have we, is there a common theme that we can learn from, from those that failed? Because I mean, I'm hoping this isn't the last of the rounds. And if people sort of failed once or twice, they think there's no point in trying again. So it's lucky to the future to, uh, you know, I don't want, uh, to just, oh, to disillusion them now.
That is a, a really important point councillor Masters and thank you for the question. I'll take those three bits separately if that's okay. So for the projects that failed the scoring process for the Economic Recovery Fund Round Two, steering group were really clear that they wanted this not to necessarily be the end of the line for that collaboration and for that con- conversation, to have somewhere to go and a life that could kind of continue afterwards and be built from. So for all of the projects that were unsuccessful in scoring, we've provided them with a direct local contact in their local area committee team, as well as a business information officer, so that that can conversation can, can continue. And of course, we can't make absolute promises about the kinds of support that might be on offer. And we know that budgets are what they are and the recovery fund is a very rare opportunity in that sense. But I know that those conversations are being picked up in, in those teams and, and hopefully some things may still spring out from those initial collaborations and happen. So in terms of those who have failed, that was really important actually in terms of the outcome process and communicating with those teams. And, and hopefully, um, in time we'll be able to report back on what may have followed from those discussions with, with the local area committee teams. In terms of those who received a reduced funding offer, um, the vast majority actually of projects did reduce, uh, receive a reduction in their offer. And, and the reason for that was simply because we were so oversubscribed and it felt, um, to the steering group that it would be the fairest thing to scrutinise all of the budgets in a really individ- individualised way, with some core clear principles to do that. Um, and then feed back the funding offer that they'd been given, but with an offer of support to develop that revised project plan. And that's essentially what we've been working to do over the summer with those teams. And I know you'd be familiar with the, what, the way we've done that in, in Banacross as well. So again, we're trying to wrap support around those teams and try and encourage them by the fact that you can still do a whole lot, even with a little, I think, is the kind of message we're, we're giving to them. And lots have responded quite positively, even to quite a large cut in the offer that they've received. Um, lastly, on the question of, uh, further round of funding, you kind of mentioned what, what might come after. And at this point, we, we don't know and that will of course be, I think, a councillor decision. I think what's become clear, because I've been asked that a number of times in the past couple of weeks, is that I need to bring forward writing the plan for, for that decision to be taken really. And I'll, I'll be doing that in the next probably month or so and bringing that back to committee for, for discussion in terms of how we take that decision.
Yeah, the one thing was sort of, are there, were there common themes in those that failed?
In terms of the common themes, it's interesting actually because in, in this round, last, in the first round of funding, the message was very much, there's a, a small pot of funding you can go for up to 50K. There's a large pot up to 200K. Go for the upper threshold in both of those pots and, and kind of see what you can get. And actually, in the second round of funding, we very much took a different approach and said, ask for what you need. So start with what you want to deliver in your project and build your budget around those items so that the project feels cohesive and authentic to your area. Don't try and pad it out with things that don't necessarily feel the need to be there. But actually, you know, these funding offers don't grow on trees. And so we did find in, in several cases that they, they might have been a gold standard project that might not have felt like it either met the recovery fund in terms of its own objectives, nor felt that it was necessarily the best value money that we could really drive from those projects. And so that's, uh, some of where those reduced funding offers came from as well. Would you add to that, Diana?
I'll just come in councillor, because I chair that group and we marked a lot of these that, that Sarah had brought through. Um, so some of the main things were the fit to the ERF scheme. And behind that were, we have specific objectives that we wanted to deliver through this scheme. So there was a lot that didn't quite fit there. Um, and then really just tested that it was a true collaboration behind it. There was a lot of individual businesses or individual ideas that didn't have that collaborative, place-based element to it. Um, and then there were some themes where the costs weren't consistent across the different, um, applications, which is where some of the reduced funding budgets came from, so doing a bit of benchmarking across the set. And then there were others where the mix wasn't quite right. So often you're doing a physical improvements to a space, then you're doing activation to kind of do markets, increase footfall to see those improvements and then marketing that as well. And that mix is really important. And some of the ones that didn't quite make the grade were just do it, wanted to do all, all of marketing. That was a real quick fix for a lot of people in terms of a, an ask. But without doing those other two things, it's, it's, it's not as powerful. So there were some of the themes and things that came out in the scoring.
Great, thank you. Uh, councillor Moynihan, please.
Um, I think this is a really important initiative. Um, it's relatively small scale, but with big impacts. Um, and I just want to reiterate what councillor Masters said about the future of this and looking at whether it's possible, because I know there isn't a budget identified at this point. But this did come out of, uh, Labour's, uh, Budget Amendments. And I'd like to think it could get cross-party support, um, going forward because of the impact. And it isn't just about the two pound for every one pound invested. It's social, environmental and, um, mental wellbeing. Uh, and it has such a positive impact on the lives of people in those areas. I think, um, in Manor Castle, the Harbour Northern Avenue Scheme has got funding and that's really welcome. And local people love the, um, uh, the murals and different stuff that were done last time. And it really has brightened the area up. The further investment is going to drive that even further. And local people absolutely, round Manor Park, absolutely, absolutely love it. Uh, the more, they want to go to the centre more to, uh, socialise because of the improvements. And that social interaction is really important. So it's not just businesses, I think, as you said, Abdul. It's the, um, it's all the other things that come around it. And in terms of working to bring partnership, I just want to pay tribute to, uh, count my colleague councillor Bacharat, who's worked tirelessly with the disparate businesses on London Road to get them to cooperate. And it's been, and coming back to long-term effects, it, that will continue into the future, whatever happens. They've got a really vibrant business forum now and she's done a fantastic job bringing them together.
Thank you. I will just note really that one of the things that's really special about this is that we're empowering the communities to deliver for themselves because they decide what they need in their area. They deliver it in a way that has community engagement and often more community benefit. Uh, and that doesn't mean that it doesn't take a hell of a lot of work from Sarah, particularly in the team behind her, to make sure we as a council are responding to that. But an awful lot of work is done by the communities and, um, we just want to thank those as well, as well as Sarah for doing a brilliant job on this project.
Thank you. I've had indications from councillors Price and Holmshaw. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in this round? Otherwise I'll draw it to a close. And not. Great, thank you. Uh, Pete, please.
Thanks Chair. Um, I just really want to comment and, uh, I add to what Abdul said about the transformation at First Park. I mean, I'd been trying for years on the old community assembly when I was chair and the area panel to engage with the private sector and the shopkeepers. And I've always told it's the council's job, get on with it. And for first time, I've seen them become involved in local groups and, and environment and improving it. And it's transformed the place. And I think we might have hit on a formula here that with a little bit of public money, we can engage the private sector. And the, and they do see the value for their own businesses of involving communities, getting the environment right, the, the parking right and the park across the road right. And it's, it has increased the footfall, I'm convinced. And I haven't, it's a long time since I've been First Park local as well. And I think we've got a formula now that we ought to be, try to get it across all our shopping areas because it really does bring the place to light. And, uh, so I, I agree with Abdul. I think it's transformed it. To congratulate everybody involved, including the private sector because they're buzzing now and they're taking up ideas that we hadn't thought of. And, uh, so it's, it's been a good partnership, Chair. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Uh, councillor Holmshaw, please.
I'll, I'll actually defer in favour of, of Henry. I'm, I'm okay. Thank you. Thank you councillor Holmshaw. Absolutely. Um, firstly, can I say it's been a real honour and a privilege to be part of the ERF Steering Group appendices or in closer detail quite how much work has gone into this and, um, what excellent job's been done by everyone involved. Speaking as a ward councillor, the impact of ERF One has gone far beyond better looking shutters and some high quality street furniture. The business community is talking to itself more and it's strengthened, the wider community is strengthened. And crucially, the communication and the nature of the relationship between the council and the business community is much more positive. Uh, I really hope this is going to be a legacy that we can continue. And even if we can't find capital funding for, you know, larger projects, if we can find operational funding just to keep that place spinning, it would be a wonderful legacy of the whole project. Um, in terms of the people that weren't successful through ERF Two, how much luck have we had in terms of finding the really good elements of those applications and signposting them to other funding that's available through the council?
Thanks councillor. As I said, um, earlier, in all of the communications when we gave the unsuccessful teams their outcome, we plugged them into the local area committee teams. And I've spoken to several of those individually about the nature of the projects that failed, the kinds of people who were involved, how they might be supported. Um, and they're kind of gearing up to have those conversations from now. Um, because everyone's been busy over the summer, lots of holidays and things have gotten in the way. So I'd, I'd hope at the next, um, meeting we have to kind of update you on some of those. But it sounds quite positive in some areas. And again, that message that, you know, the discussion is just the starting place. There's lots more we can do just by listening to each other and kind of pulling in the same direction, I think, is, is getting some traction. Um, so hopefully, at least those relationships can, can be built on. And, um, just, um, lovely comments on Hillsborough and just, it's been my personal mission really to kind of make sure that anyone who comes in contact with the recovery fund has a good experience, whether that's been through an inquiry, a complaint, uh, unsuccessful teams kind of asking for more information or successful teams as we've been working together. Um, I've really wanted it to be just another example of the council doing the best it can for, for the residents really. So hopefully we can continue that in round two as well.
Great, thank you. And, uh, to reiterate Henry's comments, as a member of the steering group, I think we've all, and speaking for Martin as well, because he's unfortunately not here. I think we've all been so, you know, pleased with the whole process of, you know, cross, not only cross-party, but community engagement, involvement at the heart of that, seeing how inspiring it is to involve businesses in place making and designing their own high streets. It's been a pleasure to be involved in all stages, so, um, happy to note your thanks for everyone who's played a part in that as well, Sarah. But also very much a thank you to you as well for your individual stellar work in this. Um, moving us to the recommendations, so both of those notes. One, noting that the Finance Committee have, um, at their meeting two days ago, approved the allocation of funding for areas offered over £50,000, uh, up to 220, up to £200,000 and subject to due delusions and other checks being undertaken to the satisfaction of the Director of Economic Development, Culture and Skills for Sheffield City Council to enter into a funding agreement with an appropriate lead organisation for the areas listed in the report. And secondly, to note our thanks formally for everyone who's played a part in, uh, the Economic Recovery Found, Economic Recovery Fund being such a success. Um, are we all agreed? Fantastic. Thank you everyone and thank you Sarah. Uh, item 11, uh, tramlines festival update report. This is pages three to five of the supplementary agenda pack. And the presenting officer will be Lisa.
Thank you Chair. Um, I'm Lisa first. I'm not the Director of Culture and Environment. Um, I'm the Director of Parks, Leisure and Libraries. Um, so, um, it just, just to note that, um, for the record. So thank you and thanks to the committee for asking me to come along today. Um, I prepared a report for you to provide a briefing to this committee, um, about the tramlines festival, um, particularly, um, around some of the issues that were encountered in 2023, which are well documented, um, around Hillsborough Park, um, a summary of the debrief and the learning so far, because they continue. Um, and also just to set out confirmation of the arrangements for 2024 and to discuss those. Um, there is a closed appendix, um, which, um, we will need to discuss in a closed forum, um, because some of that information is commercially sensitive. And I would just like to add as well that, um, there is a report. Um, so currently this report going to the Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee as well at the end of September, the 25th of September. Um, because, um, whilst events, um, generic events sit within this committee's remit and in the culture, um, portfolio, um, a lot of the events are also held in parks, such as tramlines in Hillsborough Park and also in our sports and leisure, um, facilities as well. So there is crossover between the two committees. Just a couple of points to note in the report. Um, the first, um, background information in 1.1 sets out the, the, the wider context for events. And myself and Diana will be bringing a further report to this committee in November about the wider remit for events. And I think as councillor Monahan touched on, you know, particularly looking at what we've delivered so far and what we might be delivering in future and the importance of events to Sheffield as a city. Section 1.2 sets out a little bit of background about tramlines, how it started and how tramlines has ended up in Hillsborough Park since 2018. And then over to sections 1.4 and 1.5, I've tried to explain the, um, how the income from tramlines works. And particularly with Hillsborough Park being a charitable park as well, sets out how the income, um, goes back into the park and how it's shown in the charitable accounts for Hillsborough Park charity. At section 1.6, um, we've set out the last published, um, fee for tramlines, which was £33,500 in 2021. And I've also explained there why there is a closed appendix and why we can't share that information more widely. Um, and I, it, unless you want me to go into more details, I'd like to open that up for questions and discussions. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. That's great. Thank you Lisa. And just to reiterate to members, if we do want a discussion on the closed appendix, please do save those comments and questions till afterwards. And we'll have to close the meeting and to external people and close the public recording. Are there any questions or comments councillor Notridge?
Thank you Chair. Unsurprisingly, as a member of this committee and a ward councillor for Hillsborough Ward, I have several questions. Would you like me to just present them all now and then we'll go back to them one or do them individually altogether? So the first one, the report cites responses from 4,299 tramlines attendees. How many tramlines non attendees were consulted in order to evaluate the impact? And secondly, an article in the national press last year, August 2022, cited a figure of £500,000 paid to a local authority for a 50,000 person event. Whilst obviously direct comparisons aren't possible, does the council believe that the fee paid by tramlines secures best value for the people of Sheffield? Next one, the headline figure of £3.8 million that's included in the report has prompted quite a lot of questions about the validity of the multiplier effect and the amount of dead weight in the calculation. Will the council be able to publish the methodology used to come up with that £3.8 million and the source data in order that it can be properly scrutinised? And lastly, without forcing us into closed session, I'll refer to the last published fee from tramlines of £33,500. That equates to around 70 pence per unique visitor. Would the council consider the possibility of placing a levy above the tramlines tickets to be paid to the parks or the park service of £5 per visitor per day, which in broad terms is about half a pint at tramlines prices?
I should respond to those Chair. Yeah. So in terms of your first question councillor Notte, on the non attendees that were surveyed, my understanding is that that wasn't the case. This was a survey carried out by tramlines to evaluate the impact of their festival. So in terms of the report that I've presented to you today, there hasn't been any surveys done of people that didn't attend the event. This is information that I'm presenting that was being provided to us by tramlines and that actually is in the public domain in that case. We are now alerted to the article that was in The Guardian about the £500,000 positive impact of festivals and events in other parks across the country. I don't have a direct answer for you today, but we are looking into that and trying to find out some more more information about where those numbers came from and the evaluation. So we can use that in future to consider it for both tramlines and for other events, particularly in parks. The 3.8 million impact assessment, sorry, the wider economic impact assessment and the methodology used for that. The report does set out a little bit about that methodology. And I'm going to probably just defer to my colleague Gary, if that's okay, just to give a little bit more information before I answer the second part of that question, if that's okay Chair. Yes.
Gary.
Apologies. All our events programme is placed through something called an Events Impact Model, which is an economic forecasting model that was developed by DCMS and UK Sport that quite a lot of towns and cities use across the country. And we place all our events across that using data that we gather from event organisers and information that we know about the event. And we do that for two reasons. One, so that we can actually put some sort of value on what we think the event is worth to the city. So for every pound that we spend, we can kind of then understand how much it's returning back to the local economy. And also it gives us a like for like comparison. So we can compare it to a swimming event at Pond's Forge, another music event at Don't Volleyball, a half marathon event that's happening in the city centre. So that's the reason why we do that. Economic forecasts are economic forecasts, being candid. So, but we are clear, we sat down with tramlines, we sit down with all our event organisers and robustly ask them questions about, well, how many people attended? How many people were unique visitors? How many people from outside of Sheffield? How many people from inside Sheffield? Because I agree, that's where the dead weight information is. So because economic benefit should generally be around new money coming into the economy that wouldn't have been here if the event hadn't have taken place. I would also argue if I'm honest that dead weight money is not dead weight money because retaining Sheffield people in our local economy to spend money in their local economy stops them bleeding out to other local economies on a particular day or weekend. So that is important and shouldn't be dismissed. And we see that across any number of events that the city hosts. So yes, we can share the data. We'd share it in a closed manner because again, it is commercially sensitive. And we, being really candid, you know, event promoters can often say an event is worth X and very often it isn't because they're trying to sell you a car. So we always try and make sure that we use the right data, we use the right information. We use similar hotel standard prices that we get via our visitor bureau that's benchmarked nationally. We use similar figures for daily spend of people coming into the city. And we don't count, for example, you know, the cost for the acts for tramlines, for example, that tramlines pay, that isn't included in the figures because that's not relevant to Sheffield's economy. Unless that particular act happened to live in Sheffield and was paying their council tax and rents and so on and so forth. So it's as robust as it can be. But yes, we can share it, a later date, of course we can. We could share it. I mean, I'm talking to tramlines this week about this year's figures. Because this is last year and we need to look at this year's. Yes.
Thank you. So the methodology can be shared. Any specific details that we've used in that methodology that are commercially sensitive to tramlines, we would need to take out or have a closed report just for members on that. And also there has been reference and comparison to an economic impact assessment that was done, that said that tramlines was worth 7.3 million. And because of the explanation that Gary's just given, we've actually reduced that figure down to what we believe is a more realistic figure of 3.8 using the methodology that Gary's just described. And your last question councillor Notte was around adding a levy to the ticket prices. That is something that I will consider and discuss with tramlines. It's their ticket prices, they sell them at a price that they believe, you know, is on market forces and so on. But it is a conversation that we will absolutely have with them. So I can't give you an answer to that now, but I can tell you that I'll give consideration to it in discussions with them.
Thank you very much for all of your answers Lisa. Given that tramlines tickets set out like that at the current prices, I'm sure that a half a pint a day would not affect their total bottom line. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Monahan, please.
I think it's a great event for the city. I know there's some inconvenience. We've got to mitigate any issues that have arisen in the park. But I'll just go back to our discussion on the Shared Prosperity Fund that we had about the value of cultural activity in the city, the jobs it provides, the contribution to the economy and what happens in cities such as Leeds and Manchester that do far more than, have far more activities in their parks and open spaces than we do. And it brings, it does bring benefits to the economy. So I think it's an excellent event.
Thanks Laura. I think I'll just add to that that on page six, we do identify some of the benefits of running events like this and of our event programme that do bring not only support for our hospitality sector and our night time economy and visitor economy businesses, but they have brand and reputation benefits, particularly tramlines around music. They do leverage support for other city aims as well. So like culture and arts, bringing in supporting local artists. And they do sometimes create pride of place in our communities and residents. So I agree that there is some issues to mitigate around tramlines to make sure that that fourth point really doesn't erode. But there is a lot of benefit to running events like that for the city that are captured in this report.
Thank you. Just following on from that as well, in section 1.7 of the report, I have tried to outline some of the questions that have been asked about why does it need to be in Hillsborough Park? And I hope that the report does help to explain that because, you know, it's quite understandable that people say, well, why not have it in Graves Park? But there are reasons why it's in Hillsborough Park. Also, at section 1.9 of the report, I've set out, on 1.10, I've set out the impact on the park. And, you know, I don't want to underplay the impact that has had both on local residents, on tramlines and of the staff that are working to try and put that right. And have given an absolute commitment within this report that that can't happen again. So whilst tramlines is scheduled to be in Hillsborough Park in 2024 and the tickets went on sale the day after, therefore, you know, they work on an 18 month to two year cycle. We have to give them that comfort so that they can sell their tickets. We are going to put the park right now. And then we're going to get into the detailed discussions about how we stop this happening again next year. And we don't allow it to happen next year. So I just wanted to be very clear on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a full queue so far. So I'll just take the hands I've received already and work through those. Councillor Crossland, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just about to say actually let's kind of address the elephant in the room, which is this year we got it wrong. Understandably because it was more than double the amount of rainfall than we've had before. That being said, the report does make it clear that we do need to learn from that going forward because the report also says how great tramlines is for the economy and the city as a whole. And it puts the city on the map for music. So I'd like to know what work is ongoing now to make sure that we do learn the lessons from it and to ensure that tramlines has a sustainable future in the city.
Thank you councillor Crossland. So we are currently focusing our efforts on repairing the park. We're talking to tramlines. We have been focusing on preparing the update for the committee and the teams have been putting the park back to the way it should be. We haven't yet started the detailed conversations about what we're going to do next year. We're going to, we can bring a further report and update. If anything develops between now and the Communities, Parks and Leisure meeting at the end of September, I will update the report and reflect it in there. And we'll continue a dialogue of committed to continuing that with local ward councillors as well in Hillsborough. So we'll keep you updated. Currently, I can't give you any specifics because we haven't started those conversations yet. We're focused on fixing the now. But we've got a very good, open and honest dialogue with tramlines. They don't want this to happen again. So, you know, it's in everyone's best interest to make sure that we get this right next year. So I will give you that information as soon as it's available.
Thank you. Both councillor Price, please.
Thank you Chair. See, I don't think we did get it wrong. I think we got hit with horrendous weather, which damaged any festival. Now, I attended all three days of the festival and I also spent an hour in the city centre at the fringe looking at bands. And I was probably the oldest member there, 85, every three days. And I had my six month great granddaughter with me at the time. So I had the oldest and youngest representation. Twelve of my family went and all three days. And it was a superb event for this city. The fact that nearly 50% came from outside of the city is a tremendous bonus. Because unlike Leeds, my kids went to Roundy Park at Leeds, they take their own tents and caravans and stay there. Sheffield Fair Festival, they stay in the hotels in the city and they're better breakfast, which all brings money into the economy. Eldra Park has been the venue for, as long as I can remember, of big events. Remember the Sheffield Spectacular many, many years ago, which was a big community fundraising event that went international? That was held in Park. The Sheffield Show was held there for year after year, bringing many, many thousands of people in. We tried it in Graves Park, which while it may be bigger, because of the lack of transport, you couldn't get the people there. It didn't serve the purpose of being able to attract Sheffield people easily. And it's even better now and now the tram's running to that event. It was a superb event. The fringe was in town as well. All the pubs continue to have local bands on. So that was option to the people of Sheffield. I think this was a superb event, but the weather was horrendous. I've never seen weather like it. And however well you organise an outdoor event, you will always have to cope with that problem. And we were unlucky, I think. But I've never, I've not had anything but compliments from Sheffield people who came to this city from outside. They think it was better than Roundy Park, those that went to Leeds. And I think we ought to be proud of what we achieved. The fact that it carried on on that Sunday when it just never stopped bouncing and the thousands still turned up, I think it's a common. I understand the pressure on the local community. Many of the communities, you know, they have fairgrounds. Firth Park has two fairgrounds, Hillsborough Park, Milhouses Park has a big event on. And it's unfortunate that Hillsborough is the one place in the city that has the big attraction, the big easy to get to for the people of Sheffield. But I hope that people will put up with it. I don't think it'll be as bad again if the weather's as anything like normal. So I'm pleased to see that it's going to continue next year. I don't know whether my family have got our tickets yet, but I can assure you I'll be there if I'm still around. So I just want to congratulate everybody for that event, in spite of the people who worked on there in all that horrendous weather, clearing the litter etcetera, need to be complimented. I think it was a credit to our city and we should be proud of what we achieved here.
Thank you councillor Price. I think there are a couple of things. I'm really pleased to hear you support that we didn't get it wrong. I think as you say, it was a very, very difficult situation for tramlines and for us as a local authority. There were hundreds and thousands of people turning up on that Sunday and trying to get the balance between the event going ahead and the event being cancelled was an incredibly difficult decision. And one that I hope, you know, myself and Gary particularly never faced with in conjunction with tramlines again. That being said, that is one of the things that we will be talking to tramlines about. As councillor Crossland said, what will the learnings be? One of those discussions will be at what point do we enter that discussion about whether we cancel an event should that level of rain happen again? We absolutely hope it won't. But, you know, with the climate situation as it is, we can't guarantee it won't happen again. And one of the other considerations that this has really brought home to us is we had the Arctic Monkeys in Hillsborough Park at the beginning of June. It was, that event was a week later than we really wanted it to be, but that was the schedule of the Arctic Monkeys. We had planned enough time to put the park back into good repair for tramlines. But if that level of rain had happened during the Arctic Monkeys weekend, it would have impacted tramlines. So that is a lesson for us to now consider. We thought, you know, we thought we'd planned well. But actually with that level of rain earlier in June, it would have possibly prevented us holding tramlines. So there are a couple of very specific things that we will get into discussions around. Not just how do we protect the park, but what do we do in certain circumstances if they arise again? Thank you.
Thank you both. councillor Reese, please.
Yeah, thank you for the report. I'd first like to make a comment on councillor Price's attendance to tramlines. Sounds like you had a very nice time and there is some EDM music coming up at No Bounds. So if you'd like to go along, I'm sure you'd be more than welcome. Two points and they're kind of going off in different directions. So yeah, bear with me. The first is being item 13 on the agenda is about a cultural strategy for the city. And going back to No Bounds and the fact that we are supporting it through the shared prosperity fund, the chaos that is coming in to our kind of cultural existence as a city through the questions of tramlines. As someone who works in industry, if there is chaos in terms of trade, we expect lower levels of economic investment. If there is chaos in the city for cultural experiences, are we not risking kind of our cultural investment into the city by throwing it up in the air and not having a solid plan for the future? The second is on the £5, what shall we call it? Tourism tax that comes with tramlines. It's 12.5% increase on the price of a ticket. As we're going into a cost of living. As we're going into a cost of living crisis, one of the first things that is removed is the nice-to-haves rather than the need-to-haves. I know that there are restaurants and bars across the city that are struggling because people have decreased their spending on the extras. Are we not kneecapping ourselves by this and making festival-going and the enjoyment of the arts a purely middle-class experience?
Okay. So in terms of your first point councillor Reese, on the, are we, do we risk damaging any future culture investment into the city by not having a solid plan for the future? We will have a solid plan for the future. We already have solid plans. What we didn't have was the, what we didn't anticipate was the level of rain that we got that weekend. So we have got a solid plan and we will have those discussions and make sure we're even more prepared for the event in 2024. And I think item 13 on the agenda means that Diana will be able to expand a little bit about how that event then will sit in with a wider cultural portfolio. And then just on your point on the tickets and the increase in tickets, I think as councillor Price has set out, tickets are selling out. People want to go to this event because it still remains a relatively good value ticket for a weekend of quite high-quality musical entertainment and the wraparound events in Hillsborough Park. But I also have set out in 1.2 of the report, which I think is really important, to make this point. It is a ticketed event, but the fringe at tram line still happens in the city centre and is still a free event. So there were 40 venues this year that took part in the fringe, which was free to enter. And we do believe that there were around 40,000 people that went into the city centre as well. So I would hope that by offering the fringe, which the local authority does contribute to, to offset the ticketed event, we can offer something for everyone over that weekend of tram lines. Thank you.
Thank you both. I think the other thing to pull out that is in the report but hasn't been mentioned is the number of tickets that are free or discounted given to local residents as well. There is a comprehensive offer given. councillor Kayum, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thanks Lisa for that report. Most of my questions have actually been answered from previous questions. Just the one remaining thing, just wanted to say, obviously, we know and we obviously wholeheartedly agree. Tram line is a very important sort of part of Sheffield's calendar and it's a very significant event for a lot of people in Sheffield and beyond, no doubt. And of course, you're quite, rightly and quite clearly outlined in the report, the circumstances that led to what happened and obviously some of it was out of our control, et cetera. And hopefully what you hope to do in the future in terms of a future plan. That's obviously all very good within our meetings and within the council. But there were, whether we like it or not, people that were quite, you know, impacted by what had happened. Not least the local communities and local people in Hillsborough. Whilst we obviously appreciate your, you know, your future plans and what, you know, you are planning to do, et cetera, hopefully make sure that kind of thing doesn't happen again. Those local people also need to know that. And we need to win back their confidence, because some of the comments that have been coming out from the local area have been, you know, very much anti-council, anti Sheffield council, because, you know, they're not listening, they're not doing this. So we need to win back those people as well as, you know, the members and the people that are working on these. So I'm just wondering what kind of work, you know, you propose to do in the local area, with local communities, to, A, to give them the confidence that, yes, we do hope to have this festival. But this is, you know, this time, hopefully, you know, we are not going to see a repeat, you know, of what happened. Even if you do get, you know, bad weather, et cetera, these are our plans. In terms of, what I'm basically saying is, are we communicating sufficiently with the local people to win their confidence back and win their support back for this festival?
Thank you councillor Kayum. In terms of the report, at section 1.2, I have set out what tram lines does for the local residents for the event. So the free ticket ballot, which was taken up in 2023 by more people, 16% more than in 2022. And there is an extensive, for instance, residence parking scheme that goes far beyond any other event that happens in the city, particularly, for instance, the football matches that happen around Hillsborough Park. Tram lines do attempt to protect local residents in terms of access and egress from their own properties around that weekend. And I've also set out the amount of grants and fundraising that tram lines has done for particularly charities and local organisations in the Hillsborough and surrounding areas. Tram lines also carries out a resident survey and we don't have the information back on that yet for 2023. But some of that feedback we do have for 2022 and we're working with tram lines to get that. And there are dedicated websites, webpages set up for local residents to help them access information after the event, particularly giving them the information as what is happening to the park, which parts of the park were open and when we can anticipate it to be fully open. I had a meeting with colleagues and Hillsborough Ward councillors this week and we've committed to having regular meetings to keep local members updated. And Ruth in my team initially sent out two weekly updates to local members, to committee members and to the friends of Hillsborough Park to keep them updated on what we were doing in the days and weeks following the event this year and they're now weekly updates. So I hope that all of those things, along with this report in the public domain and the things that have been discussed today, will give people the reassurance that we are taking what happened seriously and that we won't allow it to happen again in future. And I hope that goes, you know, to reassure everyone involved. We will not make everyone happy. There will be some local people that don't want tram lines to happen and we fully accept that. We have had positive responses as well that have come in to both myself, my team and to elected members saying please keep it there. So I'm just trying to present a balanced feedback. But it will be interesting to bring the resident survey back to you at future committee meeting so we can tell you what people think about this year. Thank you.
Great. Thank you Lisa and thank you Gary and Ruth as well. And I think I speak for the whole committee to thank Ruth for the regular updates we've had throughout this process. The recommendation for the committee is to note the contents of the report and note that further updates and decisions where required on events and tram lines will be taken to the appropriate committee as required. Is that noted? Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Taking us to gender rights in 12, lifelong learning and skills Ofsted update report. This is page 101 for anyone watching along the recording. And the presenting officer will be Andrew Jones. And Richard. I'll ask everyone to introduce themselves when they do speak.
Good afternoon councillors. My name's Andrew Jones. I'm the Director of Education and Skills and we'd support Richard, who's going to present the report.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Richard Smith. I'm the Service Manager within the Family, Adults and Community Education team, which is part of Lifelong Learning and Skills.
My name is Pabultral. I'm Assistant Director of School Effectiveness. So just to put it into context, our Lifelong Learning and Skills service is subject to inspection by Ofsted on a regular basis. The service was inspected early in the summer. There was a slight delay in the issuing of the report while we just clarified some matters with Ofsted. But as you've seen in your reports packet, it was an entirely positive inspection and an entirely positive inspection outcome and report. And Richard's just going to talk you through it.
Thank you, Andrew. Thanks, everybody. Just really to give you the information that you require about how we came through and how we performed within that Ofsted inspection. As Andrew says, the Ofsted inspectors came in May of 2023. That was after a break of about six years. I think the pandemic slowed the process down, so we were ready for it and we've been ready for it for a considerable amount of time. There was a delay until August of that being produced, which you've now got in front of you. When Ofsted come, they look at Lifelong Learning and Skills in the same way they would do any further education establishment, a college, an independent provider. And the inspectors gain seven, in our case, seven criteria. So they're looking at our service as a whole. I'm sure members are aware, but just by way of reminder, our service includes adult learning and community learning. It includes our provision for young people between the ages of 16 and 24 with high needs, which is Chief Training Centre. And it includes a council-owned apprenticeship provision. So they're looking at those three elements of our service. And they're measuring us in terms of our stated intent with our learning, with how we implement that learning and the impact of that, in the same way they would do with any education provider. So I'm really pleased to be able to share the report with you today. And as you can see from the copy, we'll have had, our adult learning programmes were found to be outstanding when they inspected that. Our provision for learners with high needs similarly was outstanding, which is, we're really very pleased about. That's giving some of the most disadvantaged young people in the city a great opportunity to move toward independence in life and towards work. And our apprenticeship provision was graded as good. So those are the three areas and they were the three grades. They then look at how we deliver the education, the quality of what we offer, they felt was good. The behaviour and attitudes of our learners, which we were, again, considering the demographic of the young people we support, was found to be outstanding, so we were particularly pleased with that. And the personal development of our learners was also good. In terms of leadership and management, they did recognise in their report a clear purpose to enable residents within the city to gain skills, confidence and abilities to be successful in employment and to enable members of our communities to become active citizens. They felt our quality assurance process, which is crucial for any education establishment, were effective. And they felt that we were planning and sequencing our curriculum in a way that enabled learners to develop their knowledge and follow a pathway really through learning at the most introductory level through towards employment and employment skills-related learning. They found that our safeguarding regime and tools were effective, which is binary in Ofsted's terms. It's either effective or not, so that was a real positive. And again, as I said earlier, the high needs learners, they particularly highlighted them following highly effective personalised programmes. And they said that most learners and apprentices made expected or better progress in their learning. So I think it was important to share that report, which given that we report into this committee. There's nothing necessary to agree, but are there any questions in relation to the report?
councillor Moynihan, please.
It's not a question, it's a congratulation. As a party, it's always been our priority to focus on lifelong learning skills on the most marginalised in our city. And this is an endorsement of that approach, I think. And I'd just like to thank the providers, the officers and particularly the learners in what they've achieved.
Thank you. Laura, councillor Holm.
So also congratulations on the report. But I do have a few questions on the content of the report and maybe some changes since 2017, which I wanted to find out more about. So for example, how many learning stakeholders and partners were consulted as part of the report? It mentions ten subcontractors, but I'm not sure that their evidence was gathered and displayed in the report. So I wanted to ask that question. If you want to answer that one, I can move on to a... Yes, I can do. So that was about the stakeholders within the system. And I think what's mentioned is being ten subcontractors. But there's no mention of them further on in the report. The learning ambassadors, which were very crucial to the way that the adult learning and community service was provided, have since been lost since the last report. So was there anything provided as to the impact that that has had on the service? And then there's also, in my experience, there's been a drop in the breadth of learning that's been provided. So some aspects of the adult and community services' learning have disappeared since 2017. So was there anything said about that within the report?
Thank you for those questions. In relation to your first point, in terms of the subcontractors and the partner organisations that the service works with, the 10 listed or the 10 referred to in the report actually refers to the 10 organisations that work with us on our apprenticeship programme. There are a further number of subcontractor providers that work within our adult learning programme. There were seven of those last year and this year, we're just entering into now, we've increased that number to 13 through a procurement exercise. So we are working with a broader range of providers as we start this new academic year. The Ofsted inspectors, when it comes to the apprenticeship, the 10 did go out and speak to the stakeholders as they did with adult learning stakeholders. In fact, they visited at least three organisations to see how they were operating and meet the learners and speak to the organisations themselves. So whilst not fully accounted for in the report, I can confirm that was part of their inspection. It was part, they were the people they went to visit. I think in terms of your question around the changes that have taken place, we have got, sorry, just a second. The second question, can I just remind myself what that was?
I think it was learning ambassadors was the second aspect.
Thank you. So you're right, there has been a significant change in terms of how we were previously contracting with organisations to provide the ambassador support. Our work with, now we've moved to a devolved funding model with our grant coming from SIMCA, the direction that they've given us around how we use that funding is that they would prefer, they don't want us to use it for ambassadors. So we are, one thing the inspectors looked at was our internal offer around information, advice and guidance, how that works across the sector, how we link that to our providers. So they did inspect us in relation to information, advice and guidance. We also get, outside of Ofsted, we're subject to an assessment by Matrix, who come every three years, and Matrix being the national organisation to look at advice and guidance. They came in 2022 and they do an annual check-up, which they did with us last month, in fact. So we are looking currently at ways of working with the 13 partner organisations to ensure that our information, advice and guidance is sound, is comprehensive, is making sure the learners have a clarity about the offer that they can receive. But I take on board your points, it's been raised in other forums and has been imposed for 12 months. I want to look at that again and consider that along with our partner organisations to ensure we've got the widest possible reach to our learners.
Chair, I'm Mitch Don, wanting a learning ambassador to be, so there's no ambiguity. It was outside of the criteria for the grant that we received for our adult education. So whereas previously we had been allowed to use our grants when they came directly from ESFA to actually include learning ambassadors, wanted to be devolved to the Mayor's Authority. That was outside of the criteria for the grant, so we weren't allowed to continue with that.
Thank you, Andrew. Thanks for that. I mean, the final point that you make about the breadth of opportunities that we make when compared to 2017, we have refined the curriculum offer that we make. I mentioned earlier the idea of pathways for learners, starting with engagement in learning and workshops riven right through to functional skills and employment skills. We feel that we've got a comprehensive offer. I think some of the things that we have lost potentially are around health and wellbeing and courses that, one thing that SIMCA and the Department for Education were keen to stress a number of years ago in community learning was that whilst health and wellbeing and opportunities are important, what they don't want to see is adults just going on a continual cycle of learning without any progression routes. Progression's key in a lot of this. So one thing we were scrutinised on and have been through Ofsted as well, which is why I'm pleased that they've recognised our pathway model is how our learners being measured from a starting point to finishing with the service. And I think some of what we've lost has sort of thinned out, perhaps those learners that were just going round and round that merry-go-round of learning without necessarily having a progression or an outcome in mind. That's not to diminish health and wellbeing for learning, because I think that's crucial. And I think that still needs to exist. But as I say, the funding model that we, the funding that we receive needs to look at where that takes the individual ultimately.
Yeah, it's that what I think seems to be, for me, missing from the report is opportunities for improvement. And, you know, suggestions that, yeah, that in future, if funding can be achieved, that would come back into the system. And I think that's what seems to be missing from the Ofsted report, those kind of suggestions for direction of travel.
Just one response to that. The Department for Education, as we start this new academic year... The Department for Education, as we start this new academic year, have just introduced seven new community learning purposes, is the way they're phrasing them. They're asking that any learner who comes into community learning identifies one of these seven as their reason for joining it. And health and wellbeing is amongst those seven reasons. The reason the Department of Education are doing that, I think, is precisely in line with what you're asking, councillor Holmshaw. It relates very much to making sure the funding is secure for the future, but also recognising the broad impact that community learning can have on the individual and on communities themselves. So the plan from the Department of Education and the data that we get through that new question on the enrolment form will allow us to see why is it that people sign up for community learning? What is it that we need to do more of? And how are we having that long-term impact in terms of that pathway, again, the progression model that I talked about? So I would hope that as we get the data through from this first set of enrolments we're doing this week, I'll be able to report back on understanding better why people are coming and why people are joining community learning and what we need to offer more of.
That's great. Thank you. Finally councillor Masters, please.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for the report. And I want to second what councillor Moynihan said. Having been Ofsted-ed on quite a few occasions with the sixteen to eighteen more challenging students, I really do think it's wonderful that you've got outstanding provision, you know. And because that's really my comment, I know how difficult anybody who's had a negative experience of formal education up to sixteen, how challenging they can be. And I suppose the only thing I'd have liked to have seen is sort of destinations for some of these students. But yeah, well done. Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback. I'll take that back to the team. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all. I think, yeah, Henry.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to ask a question relating to the answers provided to one of councillor Holmshaw's questions. So it sounds like the removal of the ambassadors for adult learners has come under SIMCA's direction rather than because of a direction that we as a council wanted to take. Do you think that has had a positive or negative impact on the outcome in terms of recruitment and retention of adult learners?
I think, I mean, on the first bit, just to be really clear, it's just the means by which the funding has been devolved. It's been devolved to the Mayor of Authority. And whoever provides the criteria is set in terms of how it should be used and the outcomes that the funding body wishes to actually see as part of that. I don't think as an officer we can comment on any political decisions that have been taken around that, but it's just related to the criteria for the grant and then in terms of recruitment.
So the changes to the model that we operate have coincided obviously with the impact of Covid and all those things. So over the number of years between 2020 and 2022, in terms of recruitment of learners, there was a reduction in the recruitment of learners, which I think was in large part down to Covid. As we obviously emerged from Covid and we're into academic years that are no longer affected by that, the numbers are rising again. I think a fair comparison would be one to make for the closure of last academic year and the one that we're entering into. I don't see any difficulties with retention of learners. The retention of learners has remained strong throughout. I think we're looking at around ninety-two percent in terms of learners that start on a course and finish with us. But as I say, the numbers of overall learners is still in recovery. But his last academic year, overall of the different enrolments we had, it was just over three thousand, whereas before my time, but I believe during, just before Covid, it was over four thousand. So there is a reduction, but I do think that's more explained by Covid than it is by the ambassadors. But I will come back with more figures as I get them. I would also just add that working with thirteen subcontractor providers as we enter this year is the most that we've worked with, well, in memory really. So that's, although it's not a huge number, it is certainly an increase. And I hope and I intend that that will have a greater reach throughout the city and into some sectors that we haven't worked in before as well. For example, you know, the green retrofit sectors now represented, which hasn't been developing adult employment skills.
That's great. Thank you, Richard and Andrew. I'll take councillor Price and then I'll bring us to a recommendation.
Just a quickie, Chair. I mean, I've seen lots of Ofsted reports in my time, but I haven't seen one quite as good as this. I just want to wee minute our appreciation and congratulations for all those involved. Great credit to our city, Chair.
Thank you. Yes, happy to add that as a recommendation. So the recommendations we're asking is to note the report, which is provided for information purposes, and note our congratulations to the service and everyone who's been involved in this fantastic achievement.
Well done.
Including the learners.
Including the learners. Can I get nods? Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. And finally, on to item thirteen, which is an update report on the development of the culture strategy. For anyone following at home, this begins at page one eleven in the agenda pack. And presenting will be Diana Buckley and Rebecca Maddox.
Thank you councillor Parry. Right, just to say first of all, this is an update report on a report which we presented almost exactly a year ago to this committee, where we were starting to set out some of the kind of planks to help move things forward for culture. And it's actually really exciting to be able to come back and say, we said we were going to do this and this is where we've got to. So this is all part of a journey, in the usual phrase, but we are definitely moving in the right direction and in some cases motoring in the right direction. So there's no decision to be made on this report, but it is an opportunity just to reflect and to update you. So a year ago, we talked about how the city council needed to have a cultural strategy in order to underpin cultural development and growth. And you agreed to basically endorse the Culture Collective Strategy as an interim with a view for us to actually bring forward a new co-created version of a cultural strategy, which is very much rooted in the city's communities and cultural organisations and taking particularly into account the findings of Sheffield's Race Quality Commission and greater understanding of climate emergency and post-Covid recovery. So we've managed to bring together resources to commission consultants to produce the strategy. So the University of Sheffield and Arts Council, Arts Council England have both contributed, as has the city council itself. We publicised a brief through the council's normal tendering process. We had around seventy initial inquiries and we had nine completed bids received. And we assessed all of these and shortlisted them with a panel, including reps from the funders, from South Yorkshire Mayor Combined Authority and the procurement team. We whittled the bids down to four and we had four clarification sessions using a similar panel. So we had some great applications, but through this process, we selected Fourth Street Place Consultants Limited. They're a company who are based in London, but they have done a lot of work in Sheffield, so they know Sheffield well. And even better, they have sort of picked up the baton and started running on the process already. And they have appointed a local partner, Opus Independence, who will help to lead on the community and sector engagement. So that feels like a really strong team. The whole brief and the method of approach for this is about consultation, co-creation, reaching out to a whole range of voices, not just listening to the usual suspects, but helping to use this kind of process to come out with agreed narratives for the city's culture and a roadmap into the future. There will be lots of opportunities for you as members to be involved and we would expect that there will be further report backs to you and there'll be a report also to the February committee. At that stage, I mean, we've talked to the consultants and to Opus about timescales. Because we're very much focusing on community involvement and engagement and consulting the sector, that takes time, especially when you've got Christmas in the mix, just because things tend to slow down and stop. So we may find that by February, we've got a sort of broad report. A final report may be completed by sort of April time, April, May, that's what we're hoping for. So I think it is worth saying that the process is just as important as the outcome. But we've been really clear that what we want as an outcome is a really actionable piece of work. So we have priorities for the city, we can build on the city's strengths. For example, festivals that we've been talking a lot about today. And by having this kind of co-creation mechanism, we can truthfully say, here is something that the whole city wants. This is not the city, the city council telling people how to do culture in the city. It's the, it's the city and its communities and the cultural sector telling us how it should be done, which is the right way around. So that's the first element. The second element we talked about last time was about putting in some expressions of interest for a number of funds. And at that stage, there'd been an expression of interest, had gone into some funding by the city region for something called Create Growth, which is basically about business support for creative businesses. Last year, it didn't get beyond expression of interest stage, but I'm delighted to say that this year, the expression of interest is currently being worked up into a full bid and that will be submitted on the nineteenth of September. So fingers crossed for South Yorkshire, but that again could be a great injection of support and a sort of development into the city's creative businesses, particularly thinking about screen, music, live events, cultural education, children, young people and education technology. So I think that's a big kind of fingers crossed pointer. We also talked last time about hoping that we could set up a cultural pipeline fund using external resources. And I'm pleased to say we've been able to ring fence part of SIMCA's feasibility fund, which is given to the council, into a cultural pipeline fund. We have a dedicated development manager, which sort of picks up another of the points earlier about how we need more hands to the pump for all of this work. And that fund is two hundred and fifty thousand pounds. There will be awards of between five thousand pounds and fifty thousand pounds, but it's very specifically for capital and revenue project development. So it's not about delivery, but it's about things like feasibility studies, research and development, professional advice, organisational development. So that, the idea is that the fund will help groups in their development journey and help them to look to other sources of funding as well as they develop either their work or potentially their premises. And I suppose the other thing to mention with that is that we're hoping to match the cultural pipeline fund with some Arts Council Place Partnerships funding, which will also be matched with the Share Prosperity Fund Year Three, which we're applying for. So we'll be submitting the expression of interest by the end of September, I think Emma mentioned that earlier. And this is a cunning plan, particularly by Diana, just to try and work out how to maximise the resources that we can bring into the city and to use and match to leverage other things and while not actually costing the council any money. So if it works, it would be pretty damn brilliant. So a successful Place Partnerships bid would allow the pipeline fund to be extended further with a focus on young people and diversity and would enhance the Year Three Share Prosperity Fund Creative Programme. Any questions?
I really like the pipeline fund because this is a C-cord that will get newer, probably hopefully diverse organisations because they're definitely underrepresented in the sector. Also, this strategy needs to be inclusive of smaller organisations because the culture scene is dominated by a couple of larger organisations. So they shout louder than perhaps some of the smaller ones, so I really welcome that. And both Diana and Rebecca will know that in a previous life I was obsessed with procurement, commissioning and procurement. And I wonder if there's a reason why the chosen agency that's carrying out this piece of work is from London and not from Sheffield, because I do want to maximise social value that we have in the city. I know they're using a local organisation, but is there something that either we haven't got the requisite skills in the city? Is that something we need to address as probably as part of this strategy or alongside it? And then lastly, you say we can be involved in the development of the strategy. I just wondered how we could do that, because I'd really be keen to have an input.
Thanks, Laura. Just on the cultural pipeline fund, it's absolutely meant as that C-cord funding. One of the key things that the Culture Collective Strategy said is that we're not getting our pounds per head as other places. But the only way you start to drive that is if you're in the game and we haven't been in the game. So this is, pipeline fund is about us getting and helping the sector to get those bids in, to create a little bit of match funding. Often they need ten percent from the council for a development bid, which we haven't had in the past. So this gives us a part of money that we can use to help the sector apply for more ground, more money to increase that investment in Sheffield. So it's part of a longer term plan around that. So it's a really good step forward, I think. Then in terms of the strategy, we're really alive to that factor around engaging with smaller organisations. We've got a specific sector group that we're going to set up to make sure that we have a broader approach than just working with the consortium and the collective, as excellent as they are, so taking that on board. And in terms of the specification, we did as part of our questions specifically look for local connection. And we thought it was really important that somebody who knew Sheffield well, who was engaged in the local area, could take on this work. So that was part of the decision going for Fourth Street because they'd identified that they wanted to work with a local provider in terms of doing that connection and we thought that was an advantage. The reason that, one of the advantages to Fourth Street themselves is they talked about a lot of cultural strategies, a really nice looking, well-designed, bit fluffy documents, and we didn't want that for Sheffield. It's not about something that's going to sit on itself. We need to get into business cases, actions, roadmaps. And they do that for a lot of places across the UK really. They've got a base in London, but they do work kind of everywhere. So across all of the people that bid, I don't think many were just fully Sheffield. There was a lot of these mixed and consortium approaches. So I don't know whether there's a gap in the market here for some of that, but certainly we felt this combination gave us that power about experience and turning kind of actions from strategy into actions, but it also had that local connectivity.
And involvement of us. How are we going to do that?
Oh, yeah. So we're just setting out an engagement plan for this at the moment, of which members will be one of those. So either we'll have dedicated sessions for you to input into them or you'll be invited into the wider engagements. But throughout the kind of the development of this, there's key points that are going to produce interim reports as part of the plan. They will always come back to you as members and in Doc into committee. So you'll see it in a formal way as it's developing through this, but there'll be mechanisms outside of that. So we can do informal sessions with you guys as a committee with the consultants. But I think there's also value in you being invited into the wider sector groups as well, so you can hear what the sector are saying and that's represented.
And a final comment, not a question, this is an example of why we can't lose ten percent of our budget, Chair.
Very much agreed. councillor Holmshaw, please.
Yes, so thank you for the report. I'm going to mention one point, one point two in the proposal, which mentions about the need to refresh, update and co-create the strategy. In the light of Covid recovery, Sheffield's Race Equality Commission, but also it mentions climate emergency. Now, I've looked through the document and I've found partners to work with on some of those, all of those, but not climate emergency. So who is going to be involved in that aspect? As a kind of side point as well, I noticed in the beginning where you got paid one one three, I think it is. No, it's one one one. There's climate impact assessment is not ticked either yes or no.
Right. As you'll see, because this is just an update document, it's not a formal decision document, it hasn't gone through any of those procedures. The previous one last year did and there were issues about, you know, sort of responding to climate issues. But because this is only an update, it's a fairly kind of light touch document. In answer to your question, every arts organisation needs to also be working on climate emergency. That's the point. It's not like you need special people doing it, you need everybody doing it. And that's what I would like to see in our cultural strategy.
Yeah, and I'd like to see that actually actioned and making sure that, yes, that's going to be the policy of this document, is to make sure that all arts organisations have a climate emergency strategy.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? If not, I'll move to the recommendation. Thank you both for presenting that. The recommendation is to note the progress made in developing the culture strategy in submitting bids for Create Growth and the Place Partnership Fund and in setting up the cultural pipeline fund resourced through SIMCA's feasibility fund. Can I get nods of approval? Fantastic, thank you so much. There is, there are no further items on the agenda, so thank you everyone for coming, thank you for all the officers for very detailed and helpful information today. And the date of the next meeting is the eighth of November twenty twenty-three at two P M. Hope you all have a lovely afternoon.